Welcome everyone to this morning's Governance and Transparency Committee meeting. Just noting the councillors in the room, that's the full run of the committee members, so full attendance. I'll start with an acknowledgement of country this morning. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do any councils this morning have declarations of interest for the agenda? It's no declarations. I'm not aware of any business outstanding, so I'll proceed to the confirmation of minutes. Any questions about these or discussion? That being the case, we'll seek a mover from the floor, moved by councillor Milligan, seconded by councillor Doyle. And we'll put those to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's carried unanimously. Item two this morning is the disposal of council freehold land located at 51 Swanbank Road, Swanbank. It's a four-part recommendation. Are there any questions of the relevant officers on this item? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D. Moved by councillor Milligan and seconded by councillor Kunsman. Any discussion on that this morning? There be no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item three today is a repeal of a previous council decision for the surrender and acquisition of drainage easement at 22 Hume Drive, Bun Danba. Are there any questions this morning on this matter? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D. It's moved by councillor Milligan and seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that this morning from the committee? Alright, we'll take it as read then. I'll put recommendation A through D to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item four today is our first procurement matter. It is for On Demand curbside large item collection service. Four-part recommendation. Are there any questions this morning of the relevant officer? I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D then, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kunsman. Any discussion this morning?
If I may, Chair.
You may.
I'm really pleased to see On Demand curbside large item collection service is moving to the next phase with this supplier arrangement before us this morning. Previously, curbside collection items went straight to landfill, but under this new model, we are hoping to keep up to 80% of the collected items out of landfill. This is a driving factor in council finding a more efficient, but also a greener option for our residents. It also offers our residents much better customer service as well, with households choosing when it suits them best to have it collected and to have those large items collected. This new service doubles the frequency of council's large item collection programme, which has previously been held just once every two years. So this is a real win for our environment, it's a real win for residents in our council. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further...
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to go on the record, concurring with the mayor's commentary, residents have been really looking forward to this. We did the communication, we explained to residents that we were going to move to this new model and there is a lot of chat across Facebook about when it will commence, so it'll be good to be able to make an announcement soon. There might be some spring cleaning over the Christmas break.
Yeah, it's one of those things where people regularly will just off the cuff ask me, when's the next curbside? So I've had to say for a while we're going to a new model, so I think it's good that it's going to be on demand and there's also a better ability to recycle some of that stuff through the new model. So, tick, tick, tick on that regard. That being the case, any further discussion this morning? Councillor Milligan?
Yes, I'd like to also agree and reiterate those comments, but also importantly, good to see that we are moving to the next phase and delivering as part of our strategy. That has been developed and this is the implementation of that.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. You're all happy if I proceed to the vote. Alright, I'll put recommendation A through D to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item five today is a procurement matter. It's a tender consideration plan for the supply and delivery of light vehicles, an extension of that. Are there any questions this morning of the relevant officer? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning on that?
If I may, Chair. My support for this extension for a year, I think, is based on the fact that we are working on our low emission vehicle transition plan, which has linked to our council sustainability strategy 2021 to 2026, to reduce our own organisation's carbon emissions by 50% by 2026. So, I strongly support this as we transition to low emission vehicles.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion this morning? There be no further discussion, I'll put recommendation A through D to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item six this morning is another procurement matter. It's for a Volvo fleet maintenance services agreement for our waste trucks. Are there any questions of the relevant officer on this matter? There be no questions. I'll just make sure everybody's on the same page. The recommendations are actually A, B and C as per the screen. There was a typo in the published agenda where recommendation C ended up bundled in with B, so just making sure you're all aware of that. That being the case, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through C, moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion on that this morning?
If I may, Chair. I should be really clear that this, I think it was really interesting in the report, but by July next year, council have replaced all current waste truck assets purchased. And obviously, that does mean reduced maintenance, but it's great to see this maintenance as well. And I note that council has tried very hard, I know this for some time, to recruit to these positions and we're sort of going out to contract to make sure that we have these waste trucks operational. We use them every day and they need to be operational, so we can't have any downtime in our service as well. So, appreciate this and I think it's a great way forward for our council.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion this morning? That being the case, I'll put recommendation A through C to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item seven, I believe we're up to, yep, seven is another procurement matter. Increased spending on grounds maintenance and arbicultural panel arrangements. It's a recommendation with three parts. Are there any questions on this matter, Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair.
Do you have an idea of which?
I guess I'm asking...
Procurement or asset and field services?
I guess I'm asking what would happen if this didn't get up, because we obviously were in contract, so I don't know if it's a procurement or the actual...
Mr White's gonna have a crack.
Richard White, manager of procurement. So, we...
I'll ask the question through the chair. Thank you, Mr White. Were there provisions in the current contract for this to occur? Was there anything in there to show if there was big increases in CPI or inflation or fuel and things like that? Were there any provisions in the contract for that?
Yeah, so there's a number of different ways to approach it. We do allow for increases in CPI. I would say it's been a bit unprecedented since 2020 when this was first put in place. We're now at the first contract extension point. So, the second way that we manage this and the reason why it's coming to you today is we manage our contracts with a three plus one plus one. And that's usually with foresight that by about the three-year mark, you've now had a bit of a change in landscape within the contract and you're now making decisions about whether you want to extend it that extra year, if there's changes you need to make to the contract, if the prices have changed significantly, things like that. So this is actually a decision point.
Okay.
That we can review these. The workers that are engaged in this contract were impacted by the increases to the minimum wage, which we had no sort of ability to plan for as well. And the increase in use of the contract has probably led to a bit of increase of that as well.
Thank you, Mr White. Thank you, Chair.
Alright, I'll move on to seeking a mover for recommendation A through C this morning. Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor, deputy mayor Milligan, sorry. Any discussion on that this morning? There be no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote, those in favour of adopting A through C. Sorry councillor Doyle, you're welcome to vote against it, but that's unanimous and carried. Item eight this morning is a procurement matter. Contract 16168 cemetery's management system. It's a recommendation with two parts, noting that you've got some questions, Mayor. Call on the relevant officer.
Thank you, Chair.
Good morning, Chair, Mayor, councillors. Matt Smith, general manager, corporate services.
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr Smith, the report talks about that the system has exceeded expectations. Can you explain to me what those benefits have been?
Yeah, certainly, Mayor. So, this is a bit of a unique situation with this contract in that we originally went out to quote for a smaller service provision set in place for the contract for a period of time. As we've been able to implement this solution, we've identified some further benefits outside of where we'd originally come from. So I think fairly well-known, this was largely a spreadsheet kind of operation for us, lacking some consolidation of data or quality data. As we've continued to work through this solution, we've identified further benefits both through residents and internal in terms of how this solution interacts with our GIS capability and the GIS capability that comes with the solution to provide more real-time or near-real-time information for the residents and in terms of our own planning and management of that particular service within council.
Right, okay. So the benefits are, the links to mapping?
It's actually giving us better visibility of plots available for us, location information for some of our residents as well. And that's probably something that we hadn't foreseen how beneficial that would be for us and how we can continue to use that with some of our current solutions as well.
Okay. I guess I see that there was, I guess, three years and a further two-year, one-year option, which was what, 86,000? And now it's jumped up to 400,000? Are we purchasing additional functionality?
Yeah, so part of this is that additional functionality that's available through the solution. And I guess that's why it's come back to council at this point in time. So originally, given the financial value of what we saw as a smaller scope of work at the outset, allowed us to go to market for three quotes. The reason it's come back to council, we're still in that contract term with the provider, but because of the increase in expenditure coming back, because it's now gone over that financial value for three quotes where it would normally require a tender. In terms of that additional functionality, if we were to seek that through an additional, through a tender process itself now, we'd be going back to market and have the potential for an additional third supplier for this capability, which would provide more, I guess, complexity around our ICT architecture and potential loss of value in the fact that we'd have, I guess, two solutions for the one purpose.
So Mr Smith, I note that this has come to us too because it's being sole sourced and not going out to tender. And the recommendation does say there's only one supplier who is reasonably available for the ongoing provision of the cemetery's management system. An easy Google search shows that there are many competitors. Or this, I guess, I have an issue with that particular statement when there are certainly many out there. So, do you mind expanding?
Yeah.
What's unique about Plotbox?
It's probably not so much the uniqueness about Plotbox itself, Mayor. It's more around the complexity associated with bringing another provider in. So we have consistency of service provision. If we were to bring, so if we were to go to market for the whole provision, we'd actually be terminating the existing contract with Plotbox, which there's no, there's no reason within the contractual terms for us to do that. It would require us to bring in a secondary service provider for the provision of this service. So with that comes the complexity. So I guess the no other provider is in terms of the seamless service that we get and the consistency through one provider for the overarching solution, rather than trying to redevelop work that we've already done through the Plotbox solution with another provider as well, and then work through potential integrations with those two solutions.
Does Plotbox allow data transfers if we were to go to another provider?
At the moment, I would have to defer and seek some additional advice from our ICT team around that. Mayor, at the moment, the way we're working with that is how we extract the data and then upload the data into others. So it's not a live integration solution for us.
It talks about the fact that this has now been integrated to council systems. Has Plotbox been customised to fit our systems?
No, it hasn't. Again, the integration really talks about how we're extracting data out of the Plotbox solution to feed that data into other solutions as well. So some work in place in terms of where we want to upload that data to other systems or potentially take data out of those systems to feed Plotbox and the work that has to go into that. Again, not a live integration solution, but certainly a data extraction and upload piece that we've had to work through.
So I'm just looking at the functionality here, because obviously it is a huge cost increase. Is it, by doing this, you said before, I guess, using a spreadsheet? I mean, is it saving an FTE? Is it, what are the efficiencies? Or I guess I'm trying to find the benefits.
I think in terms of the FTE saving, Mayor, I'd have to probably defer to my colleagues in PRS to help us understand the operational efficiency. I would also flag that there is, without, you know, revealing too much of our commercial position, there is some ample contingency allowed in this funding as well in terms of where this solution goes for the engagement with Plotbox as well. Mr Davy, I don't know whether you have a comment on some of the other operational efficiencies?
Alicia Conorton, manager of compliance.
Through the chair, just wondering, yeah, what were the efficiencies that the organisation's going to benefit from?
The efficiencies are, I guess, combined between council and our contracted service provider. So the efficiencies for council is the fact that we've been able to, as part of our master planning, we needed to survey all the cemeteries anyway and be able to identify all the plots. The GIS project has undertaken that project. It's enabled us to identify inventory that was essentially lost or unknown to us. Then we could gap-fill in some of the plots, as well as that part of the mapping is a safety issue. So the monuments, as they age within cemeteries, can become dangerous. So part of the GIS mapping that the vendor provides is to do safety assessments on all the monuments. So we've been able to, I guess, economically identify any safety issues without the cemetery, which if we were to do that ourselves, we aren't currently resourced with council offices to be able to undertake that. For our provider, I guess, and for the community, it enables them to have less resources with directing members of the community to the resting place of their families. And essentially, you can utilise it to self-guide yourself through the cemeteries. So on a weekend when the offices are closed or during normal business hours when perhaps they're quite busy managing services and such.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's all the benefits I was looking for. Thank you. What was the question? Does it link into our asset management plan at all? Do you know?
I guess what our belief is that it will link into, but it's a little bit unknown due to the project not quite underway, our GIS spatial project that will commence at some point uses the same spatial mapping as Plotbox. So our hope is that we will extract the layers from Plotbox and put them into our own GIS system.
Thank you, Mr Conorton. Thank you, Mr Smith. Thank you, Chair.
Alright, I'll look for a mover for recommendation A and B this morning. Moved by councillor Doyle, seconded by Mayor Harding. Any discussion this morning? There be no discussion, I'll proceed to the vote, those in favour of adopting A and B. That's unanimous and carried. Item nine this morning is the procurement matter for the mobile data anywhere subscription. Are there any questions this morning on this item? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for A and B from the floor, moved by councillor Doyle and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion on that this morning?
If I may, Chair. I do note that, again, this is, subscription is while we undertake a process with I evolve on what our end result is. So it's good to see that we have this as we transition.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item 10 this morning is a procurement matter for cloud infrastructure hosting. Are there any questions this morning about this matter? There be no questions of officers, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A through D, moved by councillor Doyle and seconded by Mayor Harding. Any discussion on this this morning? There be no discussion, I'll put recommendation A through D to the vote, those in favour of adopting. Sorry, yep, thanks, unanimous and carried. Item 11 this morning is a procurement matter, a contract AWS VMC VCDR hybrid cloud and Windows Server licensing increased to approved contract value. It's a two-part recommendation. Are there any questions of the relevant officers? There be no questions, I'll put, I'll seek a mover for A and B, I should say. Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion this morning on this matter? There be no discussion, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Item 12 this morning is a procurement matter, living and Ipswich survey and economic/social data resources. Are there any questions this morning, Mayor Harding?
For my chair, I just saw the table on page 127. It talks about a total cost of 37,000, but this cost is 350,000. I just couldn't do the figures, so I was just wondering if I could have someone run me through the figures, how they came to 350,000.
I'll leave that to you, CEO, to resolve.
Procurement, probably?
Potentially making his...
I believe it's to do with the annual, sorry, Richard, manager of procurement, Richard White, manager of procurement.
Through the chair. The table there does talk about, obviously, the living and Ipswich survey, economy ID, community ID, atlas ID with a total of just over 36,000, 37,000. And from what I can gather, the recommendation B, we're looking at six years of the contract. I just couldn't do the maths of, I just multiplied that by six and thought that would be the figure.
Completely fair, and I'm doing that myself in my head right now. I might take this on notice and just double-check why that is, because it does appear that's an annualised figure and that would only be closer to 150 to 200,000.
So if you were to come back to us before the ordinary...
Certainly, yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Alright, so we don't have a mover or seconder. Do we want to refer this to the ordinary meeting then? Because it's a bit hard to adopt part B if there's a...
Thank you, Chair. That would be great.
Alright, I'll move that this is referred to the council business meeting and request that clarification be given on the contract total over the six years.
I'm happy to second that.
Seconded by Mayor Harding. Everyone happy with that? Any discussion on that motion? Alright, I'll put that motion, those in favour. That's unanimous and carried. Item 13 today is a procurement matter, OptiSigns digital signage hardware and software as a service. Any questions? Uh, any questions on this matter this morning? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kunselman. Um, any discussion this morning on this matter?
For my chair, I was actually quite impressed with this report. I think the organisation has taken a very broad view of its needs for digital signage. So I was quite impressed that the, you could see the organisation had looked at various different avenues and to get the best value for money. Um, so no, just thank you, CEO. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion this morning? There be no further discussion, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Item 14 this morning is another procurement matter. It's about increased spending on our electrical trade services, preferred supplier arrangement. Um, it's a three-part recommendation. Are there any questions this morning?
If, if I may, Chair, probably similar to.
To the procurement branch?
Procurement, yes, please. Through the chair, thank you, Mr. White. I guess similar to my other question before about the, the arborist and the maintenance. Um, is, are there provisions on these contracts for, for this? Was this an all contract extension discussion or is it different to that?
Yeah, so preferred supply arrangement, similar to, um, our agriculture, court culture, grounds maintenance, agriculture earlier. Um, we're at that three-year point, uh, where we're considering, uh, the next steps. I, I will note, um, and similar to, which was not noted in the previous one, we do seek, uh, prices each time. This is a preferred supply arrangement and it's just noting that the spending has increased over time. And particularly this one, there's new sites that have come on that weren't on, on the list at 2020 when it was initially created, as well as the generalised significant increase in materials as well as services in the last three years.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, all right, I'll move on to seeking a mover for recommendation A through C. It's moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that this morning?
But just if I could, Chair, a correction, the subject is a spend, a spelling error. It says increased spreading, not spending. If I could just ask for that just to be corrected, thank you, if that's okay, Chair.
All right, I think that can be done administratively.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Um, all right, other than that, any discussion on this matter? I'll seek a vote then, those in favour of A through C. That's unanimous and carried. Item 15 this morning is another procurement matter, consumer behaviour and visual merchandising consultant. It's a two-part recommendation. Are there any questions this morning on this item? There be no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B. Moved by deputy mayor Milligan and seconded by councillor Doyle. Uh, any discussion on that this morning?
If, if I may, Chair, um, I'll, I'll be supporting this, but I do note in recommendation A, it does say that, um, we're looking at sole sourcing and it says because of the specialised nature of the services that are sourced, it would be impractical to invite quotes for the provision of a consultant with expertise in consumer behaviour research, visitor economy, visitor economy retail and visual merchandising. Um, there are many consulting firms that would do this. This, I think, is a very, Shopology is outstanding, but, um, I just thought that was probably not as accurate as it could be. I just make that note, but I will be supporting, um, this recommendation.
It's probably not very important, but just, just to note that this is the use of section 235B, which, um, your, your point is still valid, Mayor, through the chair. It, it's not a sole though, it's a specialist or confidential nature. So in this one, the argument being put for your consideration is that, yeah, the specialised nature, as it says there, not sole.
So, um, again, just doing a Google search, that there, there are many, many consulting firms across Australia and Queensland that do this type of service. But I do note, um, the, um, the people in these, when I look at, they have exceptional backgrounds and qualifications and expertise, but yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion?
Um, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, just to add, um, through my discussions, um, Mayor, with the team around this, obviously across Ipswich Central, um, as part of the revitalisation and what's proposed, um, I'm really delighted that we'll have Shopology on, on board and, um, there's some great outcomes for our small businesses, um, in Ipswich out of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any further discussion this morning? There be no further discussion, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. We have a late report, um, on this agenda today. Um, it's another procurement matter for the ERP system upgrade increased to approved contract value. Um, I authorised this to come to the committee just so that, um, they can meet some timeframes related to I evolve. Um, it's a two-part recommendation. Um, does anybody have any questions of the relevant officer on this matter?
I, I do, um, Chair, but they're probably, they're in the confidential attachment. So probably, I'm just looking for, to go into a closed session. If, if I may.
Uh, so you're going to move that we go into closed session?
I'd like to move that we, in accordance with section 254J3, and I think it's G for confidentiality, the law of regulations, that we move into closed session to discuss item 16, the procurement contract, uh, for the ERP system upgrade due to the confidential nature.
All right, that motion's before us. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Um, so we'll go into closed session for a bit, everyone, sorry. Uh, all right, uh, we're back live on the air. Um, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Doyle. Um, any discussion this morning?
Um, if I may, Chair, um, I know I can't go into too much detail on the confidential report, but I'm quite pleased to see that some of the amendments here, um, are turning on, um, automatic features in the software. So that's better for us from a data perspective, better from an audit perspective. In particular, I can see that documents will be automatically stored in Objective, our, uh, documents records management system and many other automated features, um, including being able to, um, staff, to be able to choose general ledger codes and timesheets. So that, that more real-time reducing, um, double and triple entering things. Anything to reduce da, and data entry is a, is a good thing and quite excited by some of the new reports that'll be coming through. So I'll be, um, supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion from the committee? There be no further discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Um, we've had some advice from the CEO in the meantime that we've already got an answer for the information we were seeking on the living in Ipswich matter. Um, so if you all pay attention, I'll explain what we can do. Um, I'd like to move a procedural motion to repeal our previous decision to refer to the council meeting and, um, as well as, um, deal with item 12, uh, now. Uh, all those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Um, Mr. White, if you're happy to come forward?
Richard White, manager of procurement. Do I just go for it, I guess? So the, the, on that table, um, there's typographic error. That, that's supposed to read profile ID, so it's another one of the modules. The, the living in Ipswich survey itself is separate to those four modules. They're the modules that are valuable through the system. The survey itself has a separate cost every year, which is $30,000, which adds an extra 150 over the, the six years, which leads to your price point of 350 total.
Sorry, through the chair, five years.
Five years, five years.
Yes, we've, we've been using the provider for six years, but this is a five-year, two, two plus one, plus one, plus one.
So, and 30,000 times five equals 150, which also makes more sense. So, um, there's, where it says living in Ipswich survey at the moment, at the first bar of that table, that's actually, should read profile ID, which is the module underneath the system. And that table does not include the cost of the $30,000 annual survey process as well.
Okay.
The total of those five items, uh, over the five years adds to 350,000 dollars.
Okay. Um, thank you. I think it would be good if that was updated, the ordinary.
So through the chair, we could administratively, um, with your support, amend the report to make sure it is inclusive of that important information?
Yep, thank you. And may I just ask too, through the chair, uh, B talks about having an initial term of two years? Well, the option for extension for additional, um, three? Oh, you've got here three one-year terms. I took that as three years plus a one-year term.
Oh, no, yeah, I see now.
Yeah, that's why I've said six. Okay, so for a total of five. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. White. Um, that resolved, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by, uh, deputy mayor Milligan. Um, any discussion on that this morning? There be no discussion, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour of adopting, that's unanimous and carried. Um, last but not least, um, we have a notice of motion this morning, um, which I don't believe there's any questions of officers. We can just go straight to discussion. Yep. Um, so I'll allow you to move it, councillor Doyle. Um, seek a seconder, seconded by councillor Kunselman. Um, the floor's yours, councillor Doyle.
Yeah, Tom, yeah. Thank you, Chair. Um, first of all, I just want the record to note that it is a, a joint notice of motion um, with councillor Feknall. And the notice of motion, um, relates to foster dog, um, fee exemption. Um, the motion A outlines that council, um, is to provide a report to the November ordinary meeting on the financial and operational implications of Ipswich City Council granting a registration fee exemption for a period of 12 months for dogs fostered by approved carers, um, with a view to implementing the following amendment. I won't go through that amendment, that's just, um, something I've proposed, um, under council's register of fees and charges for 2324. I'll come back and speak to that in a second. And just by way of background, animal foster carers are special people in our community who offer their homes and hearts to provide temporary care and accommodation to vulnerable animals before they find their forever homes. Recent media stories have highlighted that animals are being surrendered to animal shelters in record numbers as families succumb to the pressure of cost of living and rental crisis. Um, I note several articles of late, um, with, with varying different, um, you know, um, quite significant stats of animals being, um, surrendered as well as the decline in numbers of foster carers coming forward. Um, you can, you know, perhaps assume from that that, um, the good-hearted foster carers. Um, you can, you know, perhaps assume from that, that um the good-hearted foster carers, the numbers are, are down again because everyone is experiencing that cost of living crisis. And so um as the numbers of dogs being surrendered increase, we absolutely need foster carer numbers to continue to increase as well. So hoping that, um, you know, there might be an incentive out of this notice of motion, if it's implemented, um, that we'll see a number of um increased carers. Um, what was also um quite telling amongst um the, the data online and the research um is that interest um in adoptions have surged during the pandemic. Um, and um then dropped significantly with the number of animals finding their forever home much lower than the number coming into care. Um, affordability used to be fairly low as a reason, but, but um most recently affordability is the, the paramount reason for people surrendering their animals. Um, it's noted council's current register of fees and charges, um, twenty-three, twenty-four states that an exemption to dog registration fees will be granted um in the following circumstances and they relate to um those animals that are exempted from um registration through legislation. And then secondly, a particular class of dog as determined by council. So I propose that um there would be an addition there for dogs that are fostered. Um, I do however acknowledge that in order to implement such an exemption, council officers will first um need to consider the financial and operational consequences for the org- organisation um in doing this. So I note that my notice of motion is reflective of that, I'm asking council officers to provide a report on council's ability and, and I do hope, um, my preliminary discussions with council officers um are, are quite positive. I note the proposed amendment in the motion um outlined um a number of requirements that I'd identified based on other councils, but, you know, um, we'll need to determine our own requirements there. So um that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle, uh, any further discussion this morning, Mayor Harding?
For my chair, um, council already has two exemptions for dog registration fees and charges and as, as councillor Doyle said, they're exempted through uh legislation, class of dog that council has determined not required to have registration fees paid. Uh, people open their heart and home to a stray, abandoned or unwanted dog should not have to open their wallets any more than necessary. So offering this type of financial relief for foster carers, often while a more permanent home is being found for the pet, uh should be something that we explore and I commend to councillor Doyle and councillor Fekner on being this forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, any further discussion this morning? I'll return it to you, councillor Doyle, for a write-up reply.
Uh, thank you, Chair, nothing further, except that I, you know, I welcome the report from council officers in due course outlining just the practicalities around um Ipswich City Council being able to um bring us in line with what other councils are already offering to um, yeah, foster carers, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle, uh, with that being the case, we'll proceed to voting for the notice of motion, those in favour of adopting. That's unanimous and carried. Um, that's our last item this morning, um, it's about eleven forty-three AM. Um, I'll seek guidance from the committee about what you want to proceed with the break before the next meeting. There's a number of notices and motions. Yeah, the, the, subject to resolution by the committee.
May we put forward that we break for one hour? Thank you very much.
Uh, so for the next committee to commence at um quarter to one.
Yes, please.
Um, I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous. Um, and I'll draw the meeting to a close at eleven forty-five AM, eleven forty-four AM.